Hey, you're filming.
I won't say.
Okay.
Just maybe.
Six minutes.
I feel better than being here.
So, now you're giving four seconds.
Justice of the Bucks, we got her hand, right? I still have a chair.
I ran this call.
I might give you some in short now.
You may.
Can I ask this video?
Yeah, I mean, it's literally whatever going on. Just snake that out and have it like pressure. It'd be more of a, let's keep doing stuff.
Good. Call the meeting to order. We'll start off with the invocation by Pastor Debbie Bosco for our church.
Father God, we thank you so much. We thank you for this opportunity to come before you with our blessings and our struggles. Father, I bring before you this city and all those who live here and work here, and I thank you for all those that work hard to make this a good place to live. I pray for our mayor, for our city officials, in particular for this assembled council. I pray that you would grant them wisdom as they make decisions, the ability to work together in harmony, and personal peace in their lives, and joy in their task. I pray for the agenda set before them today. Let your will be done here in Rensselaer. Let your love and light pierce through any darkness in Rensselaer. Bring us peace in the name of Jesus. Amen.
Amen. Our allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Start off with a roll call.
Mayor Jeff Phillips.
Here.
Deputy Clerk Treasurer Jessica Call, here. Council members Russ Overton.
Here.
Kevin Armand.
Here.
Noelle Weiser, here. Jeff Rayburn.
Here.
Ernest Watson Jr.
Here.
City Attorney Todd Salmon.
Here.
Building Commissioner Josh Davis.
Here.
Cemetery Caretaker Joe Effinger.
Here.
Fire Chief Kenny Hahn.
Here.
Officer Dan White.
Here.
Utility Office Manager Heather Smart.
Here.
Lead Line Foreman Garrett Welker.
Here.
Park Superintendent Heather Hall, here. Street Water Sewers Sanitation Superintendent Bryce Black.
Here.
Gas Superintendent Todd Wilson.
Here.
Assistant Superintendent Josh Eldridge.
Here. Good. Counsel, you reported minutes of the last meeting. How would you like to move on those?
I'd like to motion to approve the minutes of the last meeting that's presented.
Sure. There's been a motion, a second, to approve the minutes the last meeting has presented. All those in favor can signify by saying aye.
Aye.
So, this is the portion where we reserve for members of the audience to come and talk to the council. Did you have something you want to talk to council to about, sir?
Me? No, I'm actually here with my daughter who's working on a merit badge for her scouting program.
That's great to hear. Thank you for attending. Hi, Eileen.
Yeah, just stand here.
You can stand wherever you'd like. You can stand in the podium or...
Well, I thank you for letting me be here tonight. I thank Heather for the invitation. She and I have had some conversations about her idea of uplifting, or facelifting, Hal Gray Park. And before I address that, I just want to say to everyone that the greatest honor and tribute to him would be the beauty and the maintenance and the usage of our parks. He would be so happy to see what's happening. Heather and I talked about her ideas, and she has more than ideas. She has a vision of what she'd like to see done there. I gave her a couple of suggestions. But I think the importance is that those changes will bring about more usage, more traffic to the park, and they include the things he loved: music, nature, and children. And so, we are in partnership in the beginning, and I know she's going to share more with you over time about that, but I'd just like to say I'm here to support that and thrilled, actually, about it.
Well, thank you for coming tonight.
Thank you.
Yeah. Should be exciting when we see what happens to the park.
Yes. Thank you.
You're welcome. So, anyone else would like to address the council? Hearing none, we'll get into the agenda. Firstly, on the agenda is Resolution 12-2025, a transfer of funds. Jessica?
Resolution 12-2025 is for a transfer of funds within the general fund.
I'd like to motion to approve Resolution 12-2025.
There's been a motion, a second, to approve Resolution 12-2025, the transfer of funds. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
You want to oppose? Next is burial rights requests. Jessica?
We have two burial rights requests in the 2002 edition in Weston Cemetery.
Counsel?
I'll make a motion to approve the burial rights request, second.
Been a motion, a second, to approve the burial rights request. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
You want to oppose? All right. Counsel, you reported the credit card statement. If you would like to make a motion to allow me to sign the credit card statement, we can move forward with that.
I'd make the motion to authorize you to use the credit card.
Been a motion, a second, to allow the mayor to sign off on the credit card statement. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
No one oppose? Moving forward. What else? Claims approval. Everybody have a chance to review the claims?
I make the motion to approve the claims as written. Second.
Been a motion, a second, to approve the claims as written. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
End of statement. Thank you. We could set a record here for my time in here. Any unfinished business that anyone or committee reports have at this time? If not, we want administrative comments, and I don't have a whole lot of them. I don't want to instill Kenny's thunder, but the fire department's going to be busy this weekend. Only other one I can think of is the Masonic Church has their breakfast this Saturday, too, so I'm kind of looking forward to that also. All right. Any administrative comments from the clerk's office?
No.
Okay. Mr. Watson?
No.
Mr. Rayburn?
I'm glad to see that the reach alert numbers are getting better, and then I know there's a lot going on with our truck route right now. Would it be of a benefit to try to improve the signage, not just because of the Melville project, but I'm sure Officer White can attest, there's constantly trucks that there shouldn't be. Are those our signs or those state signs? They're pretty small and they're not a lot.
Well, it should be a big one on Jefferson Street, so, and that's not even ours, so, it was nice to make it a plot to put that one up, but if we get lucky into making them bigger, they just get not very attractive, yeah, when you put them out there.
Just throwing it out there.
Well, appreciate that. Mrs. Weiser?
Just a reminder that we are taking applications for applicants. If they can send in a letter of intent and short resume, if they're interested in serving on the Rensselaer School Board. We do have a position open that will start a new four-year term on July 1st, and we are, any applicants that are interested can submit those in by May 9th at noon to the city hall.
Anything else?
Just a thank you also to the city employees that worked on Easter. Appreciate you getting out there quickly and getting that taken care of. Thank you.
Mr. Armand?
Just a couple of questions and comments here concerning our newest subdivision development. I noticed last week, as I was driving home, that we've got our city employees out there putting water line utilities in, water main on the south side of Dougherty. Is the developer going to reimburse us for that work, or, because I'm looking through our subdivision control ordinance, and it's, there's some, I just got it right here. Says the subdivision shall be required to complete all the streets, curbs, sidewalks, sewers, drainage, water lines, et cetera, or other public improvements as required in this ordinance, specified in the preliminary plan and is approved by the commission, unless an improvement guarantee's been provided.
We were just told, we gave guidance to our street department with Attorney Salmon and I talking to them, that we just do what we normally would do with whatever development that we have there. So, we're not going outside our ordinance or outside our practices or anything like that. We're just doing what we would normally do. So, whether to take it to the property line or take it to the meter pit, we just said, hey, this isn't what we normally do, then let's do what we would normally do.
Okay. Well, I'm not an attorney, but I mean, I would read that as not following the subdivision control ordinance.
Okay. I'll have to look at that.
Okay. And then just one other question on it, as I was looking through this. There's a three-year maintenance bond required, and that states the subdivision shall provide a three-year maintenance bond in an amount to be determined by the commission, based upon the assurance that all improvements provided and installed by the subdivision will be properly maintained to the satisfaction of the city council. So, that's my follow-up question, I guess, is there, does will the developer provide a three-year maintenance bond?
We'll have to look at that one, too, to make sure on that one.
Because in my mind, I don't, I don't think, I'm not going to make a big deal out of this tonight, but I don't think that's the taxpayer's responsibility, and that's essentially what it is. The taxpayer money is assisting a developer.
I would think of it as utility money, but...
Well, or utility receipts, either way.
I can understand what you're saying, but I've talked with other towns, mayors, everybody says they bring it to the property line and then they do whatever they normally do. So, we're trying to keep it as consistent as we can and make sure we're treating everybody the same. That was our goal, but I'll look into those, or you can answer there.
Okay. Thank you.
Anything else?
No.
Mr. Overton?
I have nothing to say tonight.
A response from the crowd. All right. We'll start with superintendent's report. Sergeant White?
Just that Officer Jacob Hoffman will be graduating from the Northwest Indiana Forestry Academy on Friday.
And I forgot to ask Chief Anderson this morning, cleanup week, have we started tagging cars?
Yeah. Every officer is supposed to have their reports in on that to me by Friday.
Okay. Thank you, guys, for doing that. I thought I saw two or three of them tagged already, so that's why I'm asking. There's anybody that wants to report a car that they suspect needs tags? Should I just go to the police department or ask for you, or just...
They can just call the police department.
Report to dispatch?
Yes.
All right. Thank you, sir. Anything else?
No, sir.
All right. Attorney Salmon?
Nothing to report, mayor. It is nice not to be tagging cars this time of year.
After you, or I'll get another start of that, if I remember right. That was a fun time. I think it was like a hundred, then removed, wasn't it?
It was a bunch.
It was a lot. Heather Smart?
I really have nothing to report. We are, the auditors are here, so we are working with the auditors, wrapping up year end. Urban Forestry Council had a very nice turnout for Arbor Day on Friday, so that was nice. Gave out over a hundred trees.
Did you plant your tree yet?
I have not planted my tree yet.
Just checking. Supposed to be an American wild plum.
It is a plum tree, yes.
Anything else?
No.
Josh Davis?
Thank you, mayor. Only thing to report tonight, we should have by the end of the week, the draft housing plan, so try to get that out to everybody to take a look at, and the final is still on, scheduled to be done by the, toward the end of next month, so excited to see everything moving forward on that still.
Anything else?
That's it.
All right. Chief Hahn?
Thank you, mayor. Fire department's been extremely busy here lately. We've had 101 calls so far this year out of 118 days. We're gearing up for the citywide yard sales and the fish fry that the mayor already mentioned, and last thing on my list, we've had a few factories here in town reached out to us, wanting us to give them fire extinguisher training. So, we'll be scheduling that in the next couple of weeks and providing that to those factories.
Just to follow up on the citywide yard sale, where should people go to get on the...
They get on the map. They can go down to the gas department, see Angie, or they can come out to the fire station, see me Monday through Friday. We will be doing maps on Friday at our fish fry, and we will be posting on our Facebook page as well. And last, we'll be doing an amount Saturday morning, right now, so if you've never experienced a drive-through, hand-off map for yard sales, come on out, because it's very interesting.
Great. Did I see or hear somewhere that there's an online version of the map, too?
There will be. We're going to try it this year and see how that goes.
It usually draws a crowd in the city, so hopefully everybody drives careful. Anything else, Ken?
I don't believe so.
All right. Garrett?
Thank you, mayor. We finished up changing out primary wire, open wire, and moving transformer in the easement between Milton and Melville. I have three employees going to class next week for their top-out test, and the bright speed, you guys asked me about the tree branch on the lines. They have been notified and aware that city council has been asking about it, so they said that they get on what that means.
What's the top-out test?
To become a journeyman.
Wow. Is it the final test, final step to get there?
They will be at school Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, so they'll be able to help out with the crash cleanup week, Monday and Friday.
Nice job on the electrical roundout issue we were having. I think it really shows how when you guys get there and you can switch to the subdivision, or switch the, what am I looking for?
Switch with teams.
Substation, thank you. And we don't, we run out that long power with the whole city. Now, my side of town usually stays on all the time, so I appreciate that. I appreciate that, but we're going to move together with the police department. You guys put the alert out, the phone calls stopped after the alert went, so it seems to be working well, so nice job.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
I'll be sure to let you guys know.
Yeah. Bryce?
Thank you, mayor. Melville project, all goes well. The final manhole should be ripped out and replaced tomorrow, with hopes to have the old sewer that's collapsed grounded shut, and hopefully have the road opened up by the end of the week, while McMonterey cooperates.
Is that the picture you sent?
Yeah, the sender block manhole that is going to be replaced tomorrow. I-65 extension, the easement came in, and those were passed on to Todd this afternoon, so once we get those done, we'll be reaching out to those property owners to get those executed. Improv is still on track to get its paving done. Everything is pretty well wrapped up there aside for some grading that needs to be done post paving. Let service line and phase two B and phase three are both on track to go out for bid yet at the end of this month with a special session at the end of May to get those opened. Water tower project, wires ordered the paint, and I did get confirmation that they did come to an agreement with Commonwealth to paint it from the bird hatch all the way down, so paint should be showing up at our office sometime this week, followed by a contract with your...
All right. Soon enough, you had a question for you on that.
That's on the Drexel Tower?
I'm sure I'll think of it later. Josh?
Mayor, just an update on CCMG. Got an email today from Ferg Group and Ethan Brightley or John Country, whatever you want to refer him to, they're supposed to be here made fit, now to start the concrete work. We are in the purchase, excuse me, purchasing phase for the community recycling grant that we applied for and received some time ago, so hopefully we'll see some changes downtown with the cans and the collecting of recyclables. Yard waste and brush, it's going, I believe it's going, and everything is running as smooth as possible.
Next week?
Oh, yeah, next week, cleanup week.
You see how excited he is?
Even know where to find us.
Just to reiterate, where we going to start with CCMG?
Front street, I believe.
Concrete?
On front, and then college.
Okay. And then also, to get ready for next year, you want council still...
Yes, I still need, if council has any requests or, so be it for roads that they'd like to see put on next year, CCMG, please get them to the mayor. We have a nice map at our office that we can take those suggestions and look at what they call passer rating, that tells you what kind of shape the roads in, where it falls on a one to 10 scale. Obviously, the lower the number, the worse shape the road is currently.
I know, I think I told council we switched engineers. I think we, a number of us were at the one meeting room. We thought it might be time for a change of CCMG, so hopefully things will work out good that way. Thank you, sir. Heather?
Thank you, mayor.
How was your Monday?
Great. So, we're going to be starting a new tradition on May 1st. We're going to have the official turning on of fills without, so the mayor will be doing that Thursday at 9:00 a.m., if anyone would like to join us for that. At the Parks Department, we did receive a grant from the Soil and Water Conservation District for our planting that we'll be doing at Park Headquarters. We are going to be finishing up the painting of the south restrooms at Brookside Park, preparing for the installation of the restroom partitions that will be delivered at the end of the week.
And the floor looks fantastic.
Thank you. Weather permitting, we plan to finish painting the exterior of the pool house, and then we'll begin to paint inside the pool as well. So, we spent the day cleaning out the pool, getting that shaped up, getting the leaves out, pressure washing, all those fun things. The restroom partitions for the pool house will be installed hopefully by the end of this week, once we get the things cleaned out. As you understand now, Eileen Begley and I are working together to spruce up Hal Gray Park. It's really going to be an extension of Park Headquarters now, so we want that to have a... have a lot of life and just have new, I don't know, a new, a new look to make it more noticeable to the public and to draw some more attention to that park and get people utilizing that park. So, Eileen and I have had some good conversations about it, and I look forward to moving forward with her together, and I'll keep you apprised as we move forward into that project. We are working on our summer leagues. Amanda is our league director over here, and she's going to be meeting with our coaches tomorrow. Things are going great with one exception. We didn't have enough kids sign up for our baseball league, the 10 to 13-year-olds, so we're going to have one team, and we're working to reach out to other communities to see if they have some, some kids who might play with us. So, we're working on that little snafu, but we're trying to work through that so that we don't have to cancel that completely for the kids this summer.
Good question. Is Amanda also going to do the pickleball league when it gets going?
Oh, I don't know. I haven't asked that yet.
Go ahead.
And then I will be sending out the camp registration forms for our, for our summer camps and LaRue Swim School for the summer. I'm in contact with our SST, so the kids that they can't take for their swim lesson program, they'll share our contact information with those families so that we can take care of them at LaRue Pool this summer, because swimming is definitely a lifestyle that we want our community to have.
Well, we got Stace here, too. The top part of the perimeter of the fountain, you know...
I did talk to the contractor, the plan is to get that done in May.
Okay.
And the arch for the park is supposed to be coming in next week.
Oh, cool.
Yes.
Wow.
And then the next three weekends, if you're around town, come out to the ballpark. We'll be hosting U-triple-S-A tournaments. We're selecting 31 teams this weekend.
Wow. And soil and water also, are they going to be there when we start the fountain or...
No, they'll wait, we'll meet them at Park Headquarters.
May everybody come out to start the fountain? That'll be nice.
Yeah.
If you guys got time.
What time was that?
Well, 9:00?
9:00.
On Thursday?
On Thursday.
May 8.
Correct.
All right. All right. Anything else?
That's all for today.
Any questions for Heather? Todd, you're up.
Thank you, mayor. The building got pushed back till Wednesday due to weather for it to be pressure washed and then started painting, so that's when they're supposed to start, even though it's supposed to rain. See, guys are still working on valves, and Rose Acres is completely done now. So, we have two more buildings that they're going to start. They got one pad done, and then they got one to tear down, and they're going to start on the other one.
Do you want to comment about Rose Acres and the park?
This is exciting. Rose Acres reached out to me last week and asked for some ideas about projects that I'd like to do in the park, so I've been putting together our wish list, and I'll be in contact with them again about what other things we would like to see in our parks. So, they're willing to lend a hand financially, which is really wonderful, so I'll keep you posted about that, too.
I'm just guessing because of our gas department contact with them, they were so impressed that they wanted to work with the city. There you go. Thank you for helping that one get going, Todd. Anything else?
No, that's it.
All right. Joe, you're going to finish this up.
Thank you, mayor. Tuesday, May 13th, I will be at mosquito control seminar in Cedar Lake, plus the machines will be all particle size test, which is required. Other than that, we're just trying to get things spruced up for the Memorial Day holiday.
Any questions for Joe? Stace, am I supposed to bring coffee on Friday or...
We probably won't. No, I don't think they're expecting anything, no.
Yeah. Not sure if Mrs. Salmonas needs any more coffee.
Well, that's Todd. She prefers tea, I believe.
Should have known that. Anything else you want to add or...
No, sir, thank you.
All right. Anybody else has, does Harley got anything you want to add? Anybody else have anything? If not?
My promotion to a judge.
There it is. Is that, all those in favor signify by saying aye? Aye. Thank you, council.